Jesse Stocking from Solomon's Porch. And following Jesse's invocation, we will be honored to be led in a pledge of allegiance by Vietnam Veteran Staff Sergeant Terry Dunn, retired United States Army. And we thank you for your service, Mr. Stocking.
Hello Commissioners. I'm honored today to offer this prayer on behalf of the St. George Interfaith Council and of course Solomon's Porch. And I just want to say thank you to all the folks who work in, all the departments here at Washington County, make Dixie such a great place. Our gracious and holy Father in heaven, come together in prayer and give thanks for all that you have provided. I ask that you would bless all of the staff of Washington County Commissioners with the guidance of your will. Give them safety and protection as they travel and that you would impress upon their hearts that which they can use to bless this community. Say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All please rise. Please face the flag. Please remove any nonreligious headgear and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance Stuart Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated.
Thank you so much.
That's an honor. Would you, Staff Sergeant, and with your permission, would you tell us where you served and some of your duties?
I served in a heavy artillery unit. It was, we had eight inch and 175 millimeter howitzers and they'd fire a 200 pound projectile about 20 miles. And one of my jobs there was as a forward observer, I would crawl around in the jungle, find the enemy and call up my battery and direct the fire.
Wow.
Fun stuff.
Tons of risk.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate your service. Commissioners, our first item of business on today's agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any Commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consented agenda consisting of item A, consideration of auditor approved claims for payment for April 3, 2019 through April 16, 2019. B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes for April 2, 2019. C, consideration of administrative adjustments real property. D, consideration of administrative adjustments personal property. E, consideration of application for property tax abatement, which there are six. F, consideration of applications for settlement or deferral of property tax, six as well. G, consideration of ratification of 2019 application for victim of child abuse, Boca Grant for the Children's Justice Center. H, consideration of mutual aid agreement between Washington County Utah Sheriff's Office and Zion's National Park Service. And I, acknowledgment of publishing notice of adoption of ordinance 2019-1133-0 on Saturday, April 6, 2019.
Thank you Commissioner Iverson. We have had one motion made, all in support of adopting the consent agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two, Santa Clara City. We're going to be treated to a presentation by BMX bike track, or about a BMX bike track. Can you come and educate us on that a little bit?
Where's your bike?
Council member?
Good afternoon Commissioners. Thank you for this time. To present to you our super exciting project out in Santa Clara. So I have with me Mike and Brooke Seeley. They have formed Santa Clara BMX. It's a nonprofit organization and they'll actually be the track operators. So first off, the track, or of the layout, is going to be in one of our parks. It's Canyon View Park. And this is actually an unused hill. So here's our little league fields here and then we have a new restroom facility here and a new playground. And we didn't quite know what to do with this hill for a long time and then this track came along. So we're really excited. Also, I'm going to give you an overview of what BMX is. So it's bicycles. It's not motocross. Sometimes that's confused. It's really for all ages. The primary demographic is kids and teenagers, but even a lot of parents race as well. And so it's competitive, it's safe, it's really fun, and it's even an Olympic sport. So to have that kind of a facility in Santa Clara is super exciting. The track does have the full support of the council, the mayor and city staff. Our Parks Director Brad Hayes has been very involved in the planning of the track. And then I did need to update just a couple of quick things in our grant application. I made one small mistake, it's a good mistake, on our tourism expectations. So I put in there, we had about 1,200 riders coming per year from out of town. And that's actually correct, but USA BMX has since told me that usually it's about 3.2 additional people that come per rider. So mom and dad come and watch them race, or also racing, or grandma and grandpa come.
So this would be the number of contestants and then contestants bring parents. Parents always get in the way of those young people, don't they?
Exactly, yes. Want to cheer them on. And so really we're looking at more like a 560,000 per year economic impact with those additional visitors. And then in all reality, as the track progresses and if it's operating well, we'll have other track or other racing opportunities. It really would probably double that number. And then we even have the opportunity for a national qualifier race, which would be bringing about a million dollars for each one of those races in economic impact. We've had several representatives from USA BMX come to the site and have been really impressed with the layout and all the amenities that are nearby. Most BMX tracks end up kind of where cheap land is or discarded land, kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And this one will be just down the street from a couple of gas stations, couple of restaurants, right across the wash from Snow Canyon High School and Snow Canyon Middle School. Like I said, it's part of the park, so we have brand new restrooms right there and lots of parking.
So how does this coordinate with Snake Hollow and the Skills Park over there?
Explain the difference between what's happening with the city of St. George's new venue and what you're proposing.
Yes, so they're similar but very different, actually. So, you know, Snake Hollow is for mountain bikes and there are some BMX bikes that are over there as well. And that's, you know, more of a training course. This is an actual race course.
Oh, okay.
And so it's actually completely fenced in. And to be sanctioned by USA BMX, it has to be fenced in and it can only be operated by the track operators that are signed up for that. And so I know one concern that kind of came up with the board about the operation of the track was the entry fee to use it because, you know, Snake Hollow is free and this one won't be free to use. But Santa Clara is looking at this more like a rec center or a shooting range or an aquatic center where there is a nominal fee to use the facilities. And actually the most expensive part of running the facility is the insurance. And USA BMX provides that and it's about $1 per rider. So every time there's someone riding around there, you know, the operators need to pay a dollar, the USA BMX for the insurance. So really Santa Clara doesn't worry too much about those fees that are in line with what other tracks charge in the state and actually a little bit less than others. And in addition to that, there will be chances for free races. There's a rider appreciation race and some free practice days for end of school, starting of school, those sorts of things. And then, make sure I'm not forgetting anything there. Yeah. So basically at this point, we're just asking for additional funds to kind of finish the track and make it really suitable for a state level race. With what Santa Clara is putting in and what Santa Clara BMX has raised from sponsors, we've got enough to move dirt and really get the project going. But to really make it super nice and something that would attract those state qualifying races, we need a little help on fencing, lighting, bleachers, shade. It's super important in our climate.
And I'd like to recognize that Mayor Rosenberg just walked in as well and thank him for coming and supporting the proposal. My question is, is how much skin in the game is Santa Clara putting in this? I know it's substantial. Can you kind of inform us on that a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. So we're doing 30,000 in cash and then another 78,000 in kind with goods and services. We've signed an operating lease with Santa Clara BMX to provide utilities to the site. There's just a, we're asking them $100 a month to cover everything associated with that. So it's about $108,000 that we're putting in.
How much are you asking the county?
$158,000.
Have you taken to the tab board?
They have.
They have?
Yes.
And I chaired the tab board and it was well received. I got educated there a little bit because I think my first question was similar to Commissioner Iverson's and what's the difference between the mountain bike course and the BMX? And so I was educated. I think you've done a very good job of that. And I think that there's actually some synergy that we can pick up from that. I don't think that they're really competing with each other at all. It just opens up more possibilities. I've watched with interest what Virgin has done up there and that's been fairly substantial.
Yes.
And so...
What's the surface?
The surface?
Uh huh. The bike, the racetrack itself, what's the material?
So it's a clay and sand mixture so that it doesn't run off. And then we're planning on for the actual curves, paving those. Very little ongoing maintenance. You know, there's a little bit of, you know, raking things around when the big rainstorm, but...
Well Chairman Cox asked about what skin in the game you had and I think that's appropriate to ask in that terminology for a race.
Yeah.
How do you plan on registering people or what are your operational hours, things like?
Yeah, so we, one important thing is we don't want to take away from the Virgin Track. We actually want to create a racing circuit with them. So our racing nights will be on different nights, our practice nights will be on different nights. And so the idea is we'll have a registration building. Oh yeah, right here is our registration building. So they'll park here or here and come over to the registration building and that answer your question of how it'll work? We have track operators will be there to open it up.
There of course will be a small fee associated, I don't know, $10 or something like that?
Yeah, it's $10 per race and then $3 to $5, we haven't quite decided for practices.
For practicing. How much, I mean, do our residents and visitors need to know? When they will be able to do that? Will they only be able to do that on certain days and will there be a calendar online or some way that...
Yeah, so one nice thing with our operators is they're very social media savvy. They already have a pretty good following on Instagram. And so it'll all be posted online. And then also USA BMX provides a calendar that all the tracks use. So if you just type in Santa Clara BMX, the calendar will come up and see the nights that we've chosen for those. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Mayors, are there anything that you'd like to add?
Well, only to voice the support of the council. They have budgeted funds toward this and are setting aside that portion of the park that's not being used now. We think it's going to be a nice addition to the Canyon View Park complex. Take advantage of some of the existing facilities we've got out there, parking, all the utilities are there, the restroom services, all of that is there already. So we don't have to bring that as part of the project. We've really just got to put the track together. And so I think I can speak for the council and say they're excited about it. We've met with the operators on several occasions and are confident in their ability to be able to put on races there. And just from what's happening at Virgin, we feel like there is a desire or a need for that type of facility. And we're excited to be able to get some higher state or other regionally sanctioned events to come out there and see more of Santa Clara and Washington County.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Wade, thank you for coming and your presentation. This isn't an action item today, but we'll put it on our next commission agenda as an action item. And we'll work with Brittany and the tab board for getting the documentation and everything that we need to then consider that in two weeks. So thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
Okay, we've got a presentation by a youth coalition. And I say a lot of youth.
Okay, hi. We're the Washington County Youth Coalition. They're just some of our members. We probably have two or three times this overall. But we're a substance abuse prevention program in county and so we're all from different high schools and we volunteer and we focus on learning more about substance abuse and how we can lower its effect on our community.
Super. So which high schools are you from?
I'm from, we're from Snow Canyon.
Okay.
Pineview.
Pineview. Dixie. Oh, great.
Homeschooled, yeah.
Wonderful.
Do you engage primarily peers about your age and educate them about the dangers of drugs or how do you do that?
That's our, my focus, helping other people.
Kind of the whole goal is all together for us, more of the community, man. And then I think individually I believe, one of the reasons a lot of us joined is trying to help, also to like educate our friends, telling our friends to just keep it cool because it's hard to see if you walk through ground school. It's hard because a lot of kids have second thought and have the consequences and they don't know those consequences. So it's a big help for us when we know what those consequences are and we're able to educate them. That's like huge for our individual goals because it's people that are close to us and so it means more and special things.
Back off of that, we're tasked with facts that we can provide to peers our age in schools and also outside of school, even in our own home. We're able to tell them what really happens to your body and happens to your brain. So it's really nice that we're provided with this because a lot of peers our age aren't aware of what happens to your brain especially. And so we try and provide them with facts to help them see the education.
We really appreciate and recognize what you do. And in fact, unless you've got anything else, I'd like you to stand there while I ask Commissioner Omquist to read a resolution that will be considered by the county commission tonight. And Commissioner Omquist, that's item three, but would you proceed with that?
I do. And prefacing that, you've been working on tobacco use. And you've also looked into, I believe with some of your schools, into suicide prevention and the warning signals that come in that case. You should know that Congressman Stewart has been working on for probably about three years to get a national suicide call-in hotline so that someone who is perhaps contemplating suicide is not in their right mind about figuring out what phone call or for help, et cetera. And so by having a basic number, which they're not sure what that number will be, but it'd be, you know, something like a 211 or 611 or something, that somebody can instantly say, okay, I do need some help and call the number. So that it's uniform across the nation, which is a great step that you should be aware of and something you've worked towards. And then one other thing that the health department is concerned with is the use of those herbal drinks that are often not regulated, do affect a young developing mind, as you have talked about, in ways that have led to some tragedies. And so perhaps as you move forward, that might be one of your next focus and try to look on some ways of curbing their use. Some in the professional health field have advocated that they treat it similar as a substance that can be addictive and which may be deleterious to health to the extent that you would have to reach a certain age to buy an energy drink. So consequently, maybe we can have a report back on what you find there. So while you're there, thank you Chairman Cox for this opportunity. This resolution, number R 2019-2452, is a resolution recognizing the Washington County Youth Coalition for efforts to reduce and prevent substance abuse. Whereas youth from our community work together in the Washington County Youth Coalition to prevent youth substance addiction among their peers. And whereas the Coalition has impacted our community in meaningful ways in the past year, including successfully lobbied local Utah legislative leaders to support House Bill 324, which passed so that the age for obtaining and possessing tobacco products is 21. Secondly, obtaining approval of a policy in Hurricane City to prohibit electronic cigarettes in city parks. Item three, manning booths at various events to educate community members on substance abuse. And item four, providing training in school classrooms and assemblies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Washington County Commission commends the efforts of the Youth Drug Prevention Coalition, gives thanks to each member for their work to prevent substance addiction in our community. This is voted upon and passed today by the county commission at our regular, so thank you.
Thank you.
I propose therefore that we pass this resolution and make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of Resolution R 2019-2452, recognizing the Washington County Youth Coalition for efforts to reduce and prevent substance abuse. All in support of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
I do have to...
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead.
I just have to, I mean, that's quite a list, I have to admit. When I was a young person like you, and I know it's hard to imagine I was ever that young, but I was elected president of my coalition. And the reason why I had quite a selfish motive is because they had a conference every year in Salt Lake that they would go up to and I wanted to go to that conference and I had to be, you know, in the leadership in order to do that. But, so it was back in the old days when we used to have like Red Ribbon Week and we'd do assemblies and, you know, to be honest with you, addiction was not as much in our community as it is today. I mean, it was, it was a little bit hidden, you know, a few people drinking on the weekends and stuff, but good for you guys. I mean, because I'm convinced that if young people stay off drugs and work hard, the world will just pay you back. And it's, addiction is something that, it's a great service to your classmates to remind them. And there's so much misinformation now, you know? It's like if you read the papers or certain articles, you know, you would think that pot is a vitamin or something, you know, it cures everything. You know, and they don't know that limited use creates psychosis and, you know, in certain individuals and it really does have a harmful effect. So, good for you guys, that's a great list. I can, I can see that things are getting better in this organization. You don't have as many goof-offs as you used to, but anyways.
We think you're amazing, so thank you very much. Item number four, emergency services report. Sheriff Corey Pulsfer.
Well, they're all sneaking out, just so you know. Thank you because what you're doing is actually helping me in the long run with those individuals that who do use and use those that end up within the facility. So thanks for caring about your neighbors, your friends and your community. Search and rescue has been busy. Since the last report, we've got 13 more callouts.
Oh my.
Total man-hours that were donated on just the callouts was 342, brings our total callout so far for 2019 to 36 callouts. So this trend is up slightly from what it was last year, which is not always a good thing. Besides just the training and stuff, or the callouts and stuff, they've been doing a lot of training. We just had, still haven't figured out whether it's 15 or 18 different new members that went through the Swiftwater training. And this incorporated individuals from St. George Fire, Washington City Fire, Hurricane Valley, Zion National Park, as well as some of the search and rescue members. Three-day course that they just donated their time to put in the effort and stuff. If you look at where our rivers and stuff are running, there's that possibility. We hope we don't need them. But it's really nice to bring the different groups in and work together unified as we do this because when you look at the different incidents that happen, you never know where they're going to be at. It's nice to have different people with the training in those locations, whether it's in Washington City or if it's up towards Springdale. We'll have individuals able to respond to get things started as the rest of the team comes in that has the knowledge and expertise to know what equipment's needed and what kind of manpower. It's taken a lot of effort from many of the different agency heads. And I know that Tom sneak out on us? He is hiding in the back. Tom and several others have really put a lot of sort of effort into bringing all the different types of organizations together to work more as a unified group. Over the last few months, we've really seen a change in some of the responses with search and rescue and for medical assists that require it. We just recently, I don't know if I want to go through all the detail, I did forward this out to everybody because there's quite a, quite a bit of it. But one of the calls that was really amazing is a mountain bike accident over on Clavicle Hill just outside of Green Valley, go off Navahu Drive to get out there. Of course, we had a lot of the individuals that are out there that are participants and they're riding and stuff, but we had hurricane fire respond, we had Gold Cross respond. They called for search and rescue because they needed assistance with the transport. We have the vehicles that are specialized to be able to move the individuals. And it was really amazing that you get all these different groups to come together and work and unify, try and come to the same resolution as quickly and safely as we can for the victims. And just yesterday, we were up on, we had two different search and rescue calls where I actually responded out to a father and his son that were trapped up on top of a part of Canaan. They'd actually gone up through Water Canyon, gotten a little bit disoriented, but the 10-year-old started to have some hydration exhaustion issues and stuff. And we will start looking at the amount of time it takes to hike a team up. Hildale had sent a four-man team from their fire with some medicals. They'd been on the trail for over an hour. Search and rescue's coming in with other medical personnel and was actually able to reach out to one of our residents, Steve Gilbert. And he was actually available and used his helicopter to then haul more medical personnel up on the hill to be able to get to him and provide some treatment and bring them back down to the incident command and to make sure that the 10-year-old was checked out. I honestly could not do this and provide the service that we provide without the volunteers, without the community support and the way we work together. It's just really amazing that things are not slowing down.
Sheriff, it truly is. And if you had just a second, I'm thinking back in the time when we both worked with each other and spent more time combing our hair than we do now.
I fixed that.
But in, in 2005, we had a lot of snow up on the mountain and when it started melting off, I think of the flood-related injuries and deaths that we had, I can think of one up on the waterfall where people are congregating by the thousands up at Gunlock. I think of a young boy that succumbed in Leeds and you and I were there. A young man that got trapped was just going down the Virgin River in a kayak and it flipped sideways against a metal culvert and trapped him. And then a person tried crossing the water up by Quell Creek and...
Coming out of Red Cliffs.
Yeah, Red Cliffs. And we found him down in Quell Lake. And so if you've got any words of advice or caution for this high water because it's going to start running, we've got a lot of snow up in the mountain.
Well, there's been a lot in the news as well as like our streams are starting to run at max capacity. It's very swift. Do not try and cross water. Please do not try and cross it. Wait it out or cough it up. Wait it out or call for assistance if you need it, because we have had several loss of lives, individuals that didn't want to wait it out or wait for assistance to get there properly to get them where they need to be safely. Bringing up a lot of memories.
Those are memories, aren't they? We try to bury them, but could have known, but, but right now, we know that we have a very similar situation, so I hope that people will be cognizant of that danger and risk and act accordingly.
There's enough snowpack and stuff still on the mountains that we could have a repeat of oh five and kind of two thousand and ten with the floods and such, so. Current trend is it's been very slow with the cooler temperatures, but a lot of rain today that's coming in, higher elevations are actually receiving more snow.
Okay, thank you Sheriff.
Thank you Sheriff, we appreciate you. James, we appreciate you too.
Ray, with item number five, consideration of purchase requests.
Okay. All right, the first one that we have is for some benches out at Legacy Park for a total of twelve thousand fifty four dollars.
Who submitted that one?
You.
Oh, okay.
The commission.
Okay, is that a conflict of interest?
Yeah.
No.
No. The next couple are for tourism. The first one is for the two thousand nineteen Co-op Eastern States Marketing Project, this is a blanket PO for the remainder of two thousand nineteen, so we'll pay a little bit here and there and, and use up the total of fifty eight thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty six cents. The next one is for PR, including outreach and major event services, which is also another blanket PO for tourism, in a total of thirty thousand dollars. The next couple are for the roads department. First one is for equipment fuel for a total of twenty two thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty two cents. The next one is for a new piece of equipment, it's for a two thousand nineteen Bobcat compact back loader for a total of sixty one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Did you say sixteen or sixty one?
I don't know what I said, but it's sixty one thousand nine thirteen. And then the final one is for Public Works, it's for cultural and biological fieldwork and reporting for the, it's an environmental assessment to realign the shotgun drive, which is the shooting sparks, shooting sports park road, and that's a total of six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents.
Thank you. Any questions for Ray or? Anyone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase requests as presented to us by Ray.
Thank you Commissioner Iverson.
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Almquist, all in support of the purpose requisitions as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash eleven thirty four dash O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Vale from A ten agricultural ten acre minimum lot size to the A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size.
Yes, the Bowlers had some property on Gunlock Road, and they had received a conditional use permit to build an accessory dwelling on the property. And then what ended up happening is they sold the accessory dwelling while it was under construction to one of the grandkids and wanted to break it off from the, the main ranch property there. And so, they first came in requesting, you can see in the staff reports, they first requested to rezone the, they were going to break off two point six acres, and they were requesting to rezone to RA one. In finding out how much they needed for the septic density in the area, they went back in and modified the lot size and created an eight acre parcel. And so, to bring that property into compliance, it was staff's recommendation and in talking with applicant that we rezone the property to A five, that gives them enough acreage. With the A five, they're allowed to have a little bit more animal rights than you would in the residential agricultural zone. And so, the planning commission recommended approval of the A five zone.
So, is this home going to be on the eight acre parcel or the?
Correct, the eight acre parcel.
Questions for Scott?
No, looks, makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Vale from A ten agricultural ten acre minimum lot size to A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size zone.
Thank you. Commissioner Iverson, is there a second?
Oh, I do second that. I seconded in my mind, I just, you didn't hear me say it out loud.
We sensed it.
The motion to consider ordinance number R two thousand, or two thousand nineteen eleven thirty four dash O has been made and seconded, all in support of the ordinance change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Scott, item seven, consideration of ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash eleven thirty five dash O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County in Damron Valley from OST twenty, open space, transition twenty acre minimum lot size, to zone A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size zone. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, I can. So, there's been some discussion with some of those in the community and some of the commissioners about ag based businesses. And we have an applicant, Mark and Mary Bold, own some property in Damron Valley, and they have a vineyard on it, and they're wanting to operate a winery. And so, they, the property was zoned OST twenty, the property is only about five acres in size, so it wasn't in zoning compliance. And so, they are requesting to rezone the property to A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size. And the planning commission reviewed it and felt that it was an appropriate use and recommended and an appropriate zone and recommended approval.
Well, I've looked at it, it makes sense. Are there other parcels around there that are still in the A twenty that should not have been or?
There are other parcels in the area that are OST, that as they come in for, whether it's often when they come in for a building permit or a conditional use for something, that's when we work with them to bring it into zoning compliance.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance, excuse me, two thousand nineteen dash eleven thirty five dash zero, an ordinance rezoning a person, a certain portion of Washington County in Damron Valley from OST twenty, open space transitional, twenty acre minimum lot size zone to A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size zone hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
Thank you Commissioner.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of ordinance number two thousand nineteen eleven thirty five dash O, all in support of the rezoning and ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. One more. Item number eight, consideration of ordinance number two thousand nineteen eleven thirty six dash O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Enterprise from A twenty agricultural twenty acre minimum lot size zone to the A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size zone. Scott?
Yes, the Harker's own piece of property, and this is literally right on the, as you're leaving Enterprise on Highway eighteen, it is right on the county line. It is adjacent to Iron County. They, the applicant requested to rezone the property to M one, which is manufacturing zone, to, so that they could store construction equipment on the site. And after holding the public meeting and public hearing and some discussion, the planning commission was uncomfortable with rezoning it to manufacturing. They felt, looking, they used the property across the street to the west as an example, that that property has much of the same equipment on it that this applicant or this property owner would have on their property. So, they felt more comfortable keeping it agricultural, but request, but approved it as the A five rather than the A twenty.
Parcel across the street is C two. There is a piece right across there, right on the county line, that's either C two, C three, has a bunch of equipment on it.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, is this near them?
Yes.
Would be.
Yep.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Questions?
Yeah, any question?
No, I don't have any questions.
I'll make the motion.
This property really is on both sides? I mean, it crosses the line right?
No, no, it's just on one side.
No, it's on one side.
Okay. I'm just thinking maybe that line, the county line. Anyway, go ahead, I was just rambling on.
Earlier, you said you were just thinking of it inside, you had, maybe we should go back to.
I really should go back to just keeping it, keeping my thoughts to myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, please, everything you say is warm and welcome. All right, having said that, I move that we approve the ordinance number two thousand nineteen eleven thirty six dash O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near, near Enterprise from A twenty agricultural twenty acre minimum lot size zone to A five agricultural five acre minimum lot size zone.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded in support of consideration of ordinance number two thousand nineteen eleven thirty six dash O, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty four fifty one, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board recommendation for nonprofit organizations. I got some really highly qualified people here, but I had an opportunity to attend the Tourism Tax Advisory Board meeting where we considered applications from the Dixie Watercolor Society, St. George Musical Theater, Partners for the Community of Enterprise, and for the Huntsman World Senior Games. I really get educated by our fine folks with our convention and marketing and whatever that entire bureau is called now, we've made it kind of big. But they've built together and put together a scoring matrix, and Kevin, maybe you could just take a second and tell us what kinds of things your matrix looks at in making recommendations to the Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
Sure, thank you Commissioner. As you know, these funds come in from hotel taxes and, and those sources, they're not coming out of the county fund, so the funds that we're talking about there are paid for by the visitors, and so we use those then via the legislation to market and promote tourism and these events and activities or things that will help with that. What we do is, in our criteria, is look at the economic impact that they're going to bring via hotel stays, restaurant usage and other things, what the quality of life impacts will be for the residents and the communities and what additional factors will influence, you know, the importance of having that event or not having it, right? And so, we'll consider those kinds of aspects and, and grade them accordingly, and then take that to the Tourism Advisory Board with a, you know, a statement of, yeah, this is where this adds up to, now what do you recommend? And then they make the recommendation.
Thank you. And so, Commissioners, specifically this resolution calls for nine thousand two hundred and four for the Watercolor Society, ten thousand for the St. George Musical Theater, eight thousand five hundred to partners for the Community of Enterprise. By the way, Enterprise is doing some unique things to open recreational, I'm trying to think, I call them four wheelers.
ATV's, off road vehicles.
Off highway vehicles, I think, OHVs and trails, and for this specific proposal, they're bringing kids in from out of state that have handicaps, I believe.
Yeah, they've got some special hunting permits and things that they can, they can create a program for these handicap youth to come from all over and participate in activities up there. That park has got some funding from the Utah Office of Outdoor Recreation as well for some expansion, but we really like that because again, it creates another venue to move the visitors around and give other opportunities. Yep.
And finally, fifty five thousand for the Huntsman World Senior Games. Now, first blush, you think, wow, that's a lot of money, but how many, how many athletes come and participate with Huntsman World Senior Games?
Well, overall, they have about eleven thousand every year that come in, about ninety, ninety five hundred of those are from out of the county, out of the area, so they're staying in hotels, and that's, that's the single largest event that we have in the county with that many participants and spectators and all of that. The interesting thing, I think about that one, you know, relatively speaking, you compare the number of athletes that are at the Huntsman World Senior Games to the regular Olympics, and they're actually more at the World Senior Games than are at the regular Olympics, so.
That's the amazing statistic, that we just got larger than the Olympics. So, anyway, I think these are all worthy causes, and that just helps dimensionalize, that's roughly five dollars a piss for the Huntsman Senior Games to bring them in for.
Six nights is their average, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's huge for our area, so, thank you, and thank you for the explanation. Question?
Well, no, it's great, it's. I will make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand nineteen dash twenty four fifty one, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board recommendations for nonprofit organizations.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of Resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty four fifty one, all in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number ten, consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty four fifty three, a resolution approving a memorandum of understand, of agreement between Washington County and the Utah Department of Health for fingerprinting services. Well, I'll tell you, do you fingerprint people now too?
Sometimes, yeah, every day. As you know, the LiveScan fingerprint machine was moved over from the sheriff's office to the court back in December of last year. It's been a benefit for the court, and I think the sheriff's office can attest to that as well. Initially, the machine was acquired through a memo of agreement with the State of Utah Health Department, that the county agreed that they would facilitate fingerprints for health workers in the area. The agreement was due to be renewed February of this year. So, we approached the Health Department and went over some of the terms and came to an agreement that we both think are, you know, work well for the court as well as for the Health Department. There were just a few little things that obviously Brian and helped out with. The major, the major change of the agreement, basically, well, we agreed to set it out, it will go until February of twenty twenty four. The machine is actually, doesn't belong to the court, but, or to the county, but basically the purpose of the memo is to set the terms and responsibilities for Washington County, Washington County's continued use of the Health Department's LiveScan fingerprint machine, related to licensed healthcare facility personnel background checks. So, before, when we, and they initially had the machine, it was free. We agreed that we would fingerprint all the healthcare workers and do it for free. Since the change, things have changed a little bit, and they've agreed that we will charge the same fee to them as they, as we do to all of the public. And they were in agreement with that, and that's kind of just the main, the main change in the agreement.
Okay. No. Thank you, questions for Solte?
No.
Brian, any comments?
Perfect.
I know you're busy.
All right, yes, we are. We, um, just a few numbers. We, on average a week, about 85 or so fingerprints a week, and we're closed on Fridays, but we're open Mondays through Thursday, pretty much all day. Um, and it's about half and half. We do a little bit less book and releases, but we, and so we do a little more, uh, public fingerprints, but I mean, it's almost cut down, right down the middle. And we are seeing that a lot of folks are more in compliance with the judge's orders by completing their book and release where they can take 10 steps and get it complete.
Right. Sheriff, are you still smiling that you're not running that machine now?
I think Stanley looks happier. So, yes.
This, this is really a central location.
We do. We get people every day that just say, you know, thank you for making it where we can just literally just walk across the hall or not have to drive clear out there. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Salte.
Chair, I move that we pass resolution R2019-2453, approving a memorandum of, of agreement between Washington County and the Utah Department of Health for fingerprinting services.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made, made and seconded to support resolution R2019-2453. All in support of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration of resolution R2019-2454, a resolution appropriating funds for solar power equipment on ham or amateur radio repeater stations. And I will speak to that, Commissioners. Uh, recently we had the Ham Club, uh, Dixie Amateur Radio Club come in and make a presentation and they outlined many of the events and services that they work at. They do that free of charge. They don't bill anybody for the marathon, the senior games, a lot of these events that require, uh, communications between venues and between aid stations, mobile pickup units. Uh, they reported that the city of St. George, uh, voted and approved $3,000. Their request was for 2,500. Uh, I open this up for your, uh, consideration and discussion and there's, uh, no, nothing penciled in on the resolution. Uh, my recommendation would be between 2,500 and 3,000.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give the Ham Radio Club 3,010.
3,010.
Cause I don't want to be outdone by, by St. George. We are more generous and more helpful.
So I'm accepting that as a motion in support of the resolution for 3,010 to Dixie Amateur Radio Club. Is there a second?
Second.
Your own question?
Second.
Second, all in support, uh, then of the resolution that has been moved and seconded, please say aye.
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 All kidding aside, I think it's, I, I think it is very, they do a great service, uh, to be honest with you. I mean, upkeeping equipment and, and, um, doing that, so.
You know, it's a lot like the search and rescue club. And these repeater sites are up on top of mountains, so they beat their vehicles up, driving up, maintaining them. And, uh, the solar power is one thing that we have an abundant source of here and, and it works out well. So, thank you. As a fellow ham operator, but, uh, not actively participating at this time.
I tried to use, I tried to learn Morse code when I was a kid, but I didn't quite get there. I learned how to tap out SOS.
Diditit, da-da-da, diditit. Okay. Item number 12, consideration of resolution number R2019-2455, a resolution amending the fees for services for the Washington County Recorder's Office. And Brian is going to speak to that.
Yes. So, um, as the Commissioners are aware, for county departments and offices, that their fee schedules often are, are approved by resolution from, from this body and then they can implement those in their departments or, or offices. The Recorder's Office, there's a, uh, proposed, well, legislation, state legislation that will go into effect next month that will affect the fees that the Recorder's Offices around the state will need to, uh, charge for people recording documents. And so the, the fee schedule and the resolution just brings our practices in line with what those changes will be from the legislature.
And what, uh, it says on this, the policy is effective on May 13th, 2019. Uh, and the legislation will probably take effect on July 1.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm not, I, I think it's fine. I think it's interesting that the legislature gets involved in, in the fees that counties charge, but that is the state we live in.
Yes.
I would consider, however, a friendly amendment to this, uh, fee schedule that is being mandated by legislation, that it be effective on July 1, if, uh.
Yeah, I agree.
I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution R2019-2455, amending the fees for services for the Washington County Recorder's Office.
Take place getting?
July 1.
July 1.
2019.
I put the effective date of policy, July 1, 2019.
Very good. I will second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration of resolution R2019-2455, a resolution amending the fees for services for the Washington County. Oh, I didn't flip my page.
We can do it again.
Yeah, we can do it again. 13, consideration of resolution number R2019-2456, a resolution amending Washington County's investment policy. Brian, are you prepared to speak to that?
I, I actually am hoping David Whitehead is going to help me out with that.
I think, I think David might be able to bail you out on that.
Thank you, David.
I think I'm bailing out, Cheyenne. Um, this, um, resolution is brought about as a result of a bill that was, that was brought up in the legislature, um, promoted by the Money Management, Money Management Council, um, from the state. Um, it kind of just broadens the ability of the Money Management Act to allow certain government municipalities and other areas to invest in, um, other types of CDs, certificates of deposit that we have not been allowed to invest in prior to that. It will allow us to be a little more diversified in our investments. And the Money Management Council ones that promoted this, and so we're just, we're just trying to change our investment policy that so that our money managers can have the freedom to invest in these CDs as well.
And this, uh, change specifically, I think allows a little more flexibility for money market accounts.
Does.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2019-2456, a resolution amending Washington County's investment policy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll second that and, uh, with one note on item C, which is our packet P111, but other pages are not numbered. I find it interesting, and David, maybe you can answer this, that it's limited to 5% of the bank's capital and deposit, but it says an unsecured deposit. So, item C in there, it says the maximum unsecured deposits invested with any one bank, Utah bank, shall be limited to 5% of that bank's capital and deposit. And, and to look at that and to read it, it means that one organization, in case the county or any county, cannot own more than 5% or have deposited within a bank or institute, but more than 5% of their total bank asset. But it says that that's in an unsecured base. That imply that there's no FDIC insurance?
Yeah, I think it is. And, uh.
Um, I'd have to look it up. I'm not sure how that would.
I know that.
Into the base.
Uh, it's covered by the Money Management Act.
Yeah.
And the Money Management Act, uh, talks about the types of bonding instruments and things that the county can buy. And most of all of those instruments are actually unsecured, but they're very, very conservative.
Yeah. An interesting sentence. I, I don't know who wrote it, but I mean, it's, it's a good guideline. I don't think we'll ever even approach that, but nevertheless, um, I did take notice of that one.
Hey.
Okay, well, thank you.
Right.
So I seconded that.
Thanks, David. Let's see, we hadn't voted yet, right?
We haven't got a motion on it yet.
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
I seconded.
Second, all in support then of 2019-2456, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration of resolution R2019-2457, a resolution approving the Iron Man Plan Proposal. Kevin.
Thanks, Commissioners. Um, you know, we've been, uh, working with Iron Man for 10 years now. This will be our 10th year with the event. Um, that's proven to be pretty successful. Uh, the return on investment from the county side is about 20 to 1, uh, for every dollar that we, person dollar that we put into that, we get that back in economic impact. So, um, we've been talking with Iron Man about the next five years because our agreement ends with this race. And, uh, they've put, put together a proposal together that, uh, we feel good about, um, with a plan to have inter, reintroduced the full distance race in 2020 and then also again in 2023, um, and then still have the, uh, 70.3 North American Championship in the other three years. Um, that full distance race would also be, uh, North American Championship race as well. Um, Utah Sports Commission is strongly behind this and the TAB Board, uh, looked at the proposal and said, yeah, go ahead and get this thing going. So we just wanted to bring it, uh, to the Commission's attention and, and so that we can go out and, and cross all the Ts and dot the Is on the, on the contracts and make that thing happen.
So it's my understanding that we, uh, are reimbursed from the state on part of this.
Yeah. Yeah, we get, uh, currently we get a hundred thousand dollars each year back from the Utah Sports Commission.
Do we know if they're, uh, if we have the world championship yet?
Oh, yeah.
Not, we don't know that yet. We got our fingers crossed and we're hoping for an announcement on that sometime. They said four to six weeks, which makes it about the time of our race. So that's kind of what we're, we're hoping to find out on that one too. So in addition to this five-year agreement that we would have for the annual races, that's still out there in the, in the wings as, and it could come in as well.
Ah, interesting.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Commissioners, we have before us resolution R2019-2457.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2019-2457, a resolution approving Iron Man Plan Proposal.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of 2019-2457. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 15, uh, this is consideration of resolution number R2019-2458, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and JUB Engineering for improvements at Legacy Park. Nicole.
Um, so as you know, Commissioners, when we were working on the Grafton Building, we contracted with JUB Engineering to put together sort of a master plan on landscape. And, um, we, I'm currently in the process of working with them to, um, do, and some additional improvements to Legacy Park on the landscaping end. However, at this time, I recommend that we table this. Um, I'm still trying to refine a little bit of the agreement and, um, it's not ready and before you at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
To table.
I make a motion that we table item 15.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table item number 15. All in support of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration of a memorandum of understanding between Washington County, Utah and Diamond Valley Acres Water Company. Again, Nicole.
Okay, so, um, as again you're aware, um, the unincorporated area of Washington County, um, does receive recreation arts, arts and park tax, um, each year for the unincorporated area. And, um, those RAP funds, um, for a recreational facility, they must be publicly, the park must be publicly owned or oper, or operated publicly and maintained. So, um, Diamond Valley currently has a lovely park that, um, that they, um, have for the public, um, that is currently owned by the Diamond Valley Acres Water Company. And so this agreement really just clarifies that that park will remain publicly opened and which will allow them to apply for the RAP funding and allow us to continue to beautify the area for them.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Nicole?
No, fantastic.
Brian, have you had an opportunity to look at the agreement?
Okay. And I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Washington County, Utah and the Diamond Valley Acres Water Company.
And I second that.
The motion has been made and seconded in support of approving the memorandum of understanding. All in support of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Commissioner report. Any?
No, just, uh.
Well, big time last week up on UAC. So that's where you were, Victor, and.
Yeah, myself and Commissioner Cox was Utah County, um, beautiful county, not as beautiful as Washington. And, uh.
They can only wish.
They can only wish. We, we did have a very educational time up there.
I think the public should know that yesterday we held a meeting with all the department heads and which everybody gets on board. Now, they, they know what other departments are doing, support each other, and it's a nice time for them to also bounce any issues off of ourselves. And then maybe some other departments have some overlap and feel like that can solve. So I think the public should know that's an ongoing thing that we strive to do so that everyone's on the same page.
Thank you for the observation and Commissioner, thank you for your service to UAC and it keeps you busy. I know that. Uh, we are at the end of our adjourn, uh, agenda. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.